I call the order of the special city council meeting of July 10, 2023. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance by the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first we have an executive session concerning economic development in which premature disclosure would prejudice the competition or bargaining position of the city. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Councilor Milks and we have Councilor Walker as a second. All those in favor? Opposed? None being? We now stand in an executive session. We'll have another executive session after that and then reconvene the meeting inside
The motions are done. We're moving on to regular business now. Next is Ordinance 06-062023, amending the Auburn Code of Ordinances, Division 12, General Business Section 60-500. This is a public hearing and second reading. Do I have a motion?
Similar to.
Counselor Staples, second on Counselor Milks. I'll open this up to the public. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak about this specific agenda item? None being? I'll bring it back to the council. Counsel, any debate? Ask for roll call vote at this time.
Counselor Moran.
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Staples?
Yes.
Counselor Gary?
No.
Counselor Hawes?
Yes.
Counselor Milks?
Yes.
That passes by a vote of five one. Also like for the record too, Counselor Whiting is excused today. Next is Ordinance 07-06202023, amending Auburn Court of Ordinances, Division 13, General Business Two, Section 6E-526. It's a public hearing and second reading. Do I have a motion?
Similar to.
Second.
Counselor Staples, second for Counselor Walker. I'll open this up to the public for comment. This is a public hearing. If there's any members of the public that would like to speak, please step up to the podium, state your name, address, and leave me your comments to three minutes. And just for everybody's knowledge, this has to do with lot coverage in the business zone, the footprint for businesses moving up from thirty to sixty percent. No public comment? Bring it back to the council. Counsel, debate, discussion? None? Ask for a roll call vote at this time.
Counselor Moran?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Staples?
Yes.
Counselor Gary?
No.
Counselor Hawes?
Yes.
Counselor Milks?
Yes.
Passes five one. Next is Ordinance 08-06202023, amending the Auburn Code of Ordinances, Division 15, Industrial Zoning District, Section 60-579. It's a public hearing and second reading. Do I have a motion?
Similar to.
Second.
Motion from Counselor Staples, second from Counselor Walker. I'll open this up to the public. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak? If so, please step up to the podium and state your name and address. None being? Okay, bring it back to the council. Counsel, any debate? Again, this is similar to the previous two ordinances. None being? Ask for a roll call vote at this time. Sue?
Counselor Moran?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Staples?
Yes.
Counselor Gary?
No.
Counselor Hawes?
Yes.
Counselor Milks?
Yes.
Okay, passes six one. Excuse me, five one. Next is Ordinance 09-06202023, amending the zoning at 37 Loring Avenue, parcel ID 211-282, from Auburn Residential to multifamily suburban. It's a public hearing and second reading. Do I have a motion?
Similar to.
Second.
Counselor Staples, second from Counselor Moran. I'll open this up to the public. If there's any members of the public that would like to speak on this, please step up to the podium, give us your name and address, and leave me your comments for about three minutes, and I will remind everybody. This is second reading. First reading, it did fail in first reading.
Good evening. My name is John Cleveland. I reside at 183 Davis Avenue in Auburn. I'm speaking to this because I'm supportive of your efforts to sell property that the city owns that not being used very well, vacant lots primarily. I think that's a good idea, particularly if there isn't a particular value to the city for it. So I wanted to offer my support, but I also wanted to share with you a suggestion because when I was on the mayor and council, we did the same kind of thing and sold property. And one of the things that developed was that some of the property that we sold, folks came with great ideas and good intentions to develop the lots, but they never got developed, some of them.
Excuse me, excuse me, this is not a city-owned lot that we're in reference to.
Oh, I'm sorry. Pardon me, is this a privately owned lot?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Pardon me. Could you say who owned it? I didn't realize it was privately owned.
No, it's in, everything's on the packet. Thank you.
Okay, excuse me.
Is there anybody else in the public that would like to speak?
Mike Adler, 82 Loring Avenue, Auburn. Regarding the 37 Loring Avenue property, I don't believe this should go through for the simple fact that this is nothing more than a spot zone to satisfy one developer. I thought we were trying to get away from that in the zoning in the city here. That lot is not set up for multifamily zoning. Our home is in urban residential, single-family homes. There are only two multifamily houses on Loring Avenue. The rest are all single-family. To put this in that area would not be right. It will ruin that neighborhood. It will devalue our properties. Looking at these petitions that were signed, there is nobody from our area on these petitions. There are people in this area of Auburn, far out in Auburn, out where you live.
Can you go a little closer?
Oh, further out where you live, Mr. Mayor, and other areas, South Auburn. I mean, you would have thought that they would have at least come around to ask us. A third of these, all names on these petitions weren't even valid. You had to go out and get more signatures. So I'm asking the city right now not to do this, not to pass this, because it just is not the right time. It's not the right place, and it doesn't need to be there. Thank you.
Seeing no... We have more people? Yeah, just hop right up in line. That way we can just keep it going, okay?
Deana Chapman, 40 Vivian Street in New Auburn. I'd just like to say we visited this five years ago. I see some familiar faces of council that was on it. We showed out in large numbers at Walton. We filled Walton School. This property, it will change and negatively impact our neighborhood. It will change the character, the quality of life, the wildlife, property values, safety issues, the traffic. There is not a lot of green spaces in New Auburn, in downtown. In what little green space we have, we walk our dogs, we snowmobile, the community slides, we have sliding hills. To take any of that green space, that's not what this neighborhood, when this neighborhood was created, there was no mistake when they made, when this neighborhood was organized, the original zoning. They made no mistake when they did that zoning then. So there is a significant amount of land elsewhere that we can put multifamilies. This is not a multifamily neighborhood. These are single-family, the wildlife that are back there, the kids that snowmobile, snowshoe. I mean, you can't do this to our community. It's an old community, and if I welcome any of you to take a drive down there and see what lot we're talking about. It's surrounded by single families. Now, if you wanted to put a couple of single families in there, another road, and keep the neighborhood, I don't think you'd hear any of us complain, but to put multi-housing in there, it's just not for our neighborhood. There is no need to change this zoning in this neighborhood, none at all. And if anybody has any reason why they think it should, I'd like to hear them. Also, let's see, it's not going to solve our housing crisis. If anything, it's going to put a huge impact on our roads that already can't take the houses that live there now. I'm a resident, not a renter. I'm a taxpayer, and I would ask this council to please listen to the citizens of this neighborhood. They have spoken up. How many times do we have to keep coming and saying, five years ago, we just did the planning board. Planning board shot it down. They had some recommendations. It's just getting very out of hand that we have to keep revisiting this. But please check out that property. It's not buildable for multifamilies, and I would ask the council to really please consider the taxpayers and the residents that live in this neighborhood. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lisa St. Elia Kreitz, and I reside at 108 Loring Avenue. And I also have a property at 69 Loring Avenue that abuts this property that we're speaking about tonight. You know, I spoke before, which not in front of you, but what everybody's saying is it's been there for so long. The Houston field, they were, they did everything they could to keep that field from being developed. And that abuts this property that we're talking about. The lot that we're talking about is, I mean, it's flat a little bit, but then it goes down a steep hill, and then there's a lot of, there's a lot of water or there's a wetland down there. And I just don't think it's the right place to do this either, and I just appeal to you to not accept it, to turn it down. Thank you.
My name is Chris Henry. I live at 97 Loring Ave. I think my neighbors have pretty much already said what needs to be said, but that's the thing. We have to keep coming back here over and over and over, and we appreciate you guys listening to us, but you know, we, you know, we hope that you'll listen to us now, like you listened to us before, because, I mean, we elect you to represent us, and you're going to see more and more people in that neighborhood. They're going to continue to come here and say, please don't put that there. This is, this is not, it's not right for that particular neighborhood. I've traveled all around the world. There's, there's places in Germany where you can walk the woods. You'll see elderly people. They're safe. This neighborhood is like that. Elderly couples can walk down the road at night, children and everything. It's a safe neighborhood. It's single-family homes, and we look out for each other, and that's why we talk to each other, and we're coming here. And we're going to continue to come here in hoping that you guys will, you know, listen to us and respect, you know, our wishes and everything, and we would appreciate that of all of you. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to bring this back to the council this time. One time, please, ma'am. No, I think we're good. We're going to bring this back to the council for debate. We can only have one person come up at a time. One person, if you could. You can't continuously come back. We don't, we can't engage back and forth. That's, it's not, it's public hearing, comment. We have to now deliberate. So I'm going to bring this back down to the council to deliberate. I do want to, before we enter deliberation, there's a couple of points I just wanted to clarify for folks. This zone change was not brought forth by the planning board or the city council. Everybody in Auburn, anybody, has the right to petition their government, and we have an obligation to listen to that petition. So, you know, this could happen every six months. Someone could petition to change the zoning in the same lot, but we have an obligation to listen. So we can't, so I mean, when people start, you know, say, hey, it's going to happen again and again, there's really nothing we can do about that. So I just wanted to make sure everybody was clear on that technicality. Counsel, is there any, any conversation, debate on this? None being? I'm going to ask for a roll call vote.
Counselor Moran?
No.
Counselor Walker?
No.
Counselor Staples?
No.
Counselor Gary?
No.
Counselor Hawes?
No.
Counselor Milks?
No.
Okay, the, no, we don't do this. We don't clap. Okay, the, no, we don't do this, we don't clap. The order fails by vote of six to zero. Thank you. Well, moving on, the next order of business, nine three dash zero seven one zero two oh two three. Authorizing the city manager to execute the collective bargaining agreement with MSEA.
Hold on, Mr. Mayor, hold on.
You skipped one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Next is ordinance ten dash zero six two zero two zero two three. Amending the Auburn Code of Ordinances, definition, and Agriculture and Resource Protection District of Chapter sixty, zoning as shown in Proposal B, which is attached. This is a public hearing and second reading. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Counselor Staples, second by Counselor Moran. Can't believe I forgot to read that one. I'll open this up to the public, it's a public hearing and the second reading. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak? If so, please step up to the podium and give us your name and address, and limit your comments to approximately three minutes.
Hey, Chris Carson, Jakes Road in Auburn. I am here representing a group of folks that have come together in the agricultural zone and have been talking to city staff about this issue for several years, I think. Our group, which is known as the Save Auburn Agricultural and Resource Protection Group, we could probably use a better name, would like to formally endorse Proposal B, and we encourage the city council to pass Proposal B and in the second reading. It is in line with the comprehensive plan, which divides the city into three categories, growth categories, limited growth categories, and non-growth areas, and it places the agricultural and resource protection zone in the non-growth area of the city, writing that largely undeveloped areas should remain undeveloped for at least the next ten years. These areas include land with significant development constraints that should not be developed, as well as land that is not appropriate for development at this time, but may be designated for development in the future. Let's see. Proposal B is the only proposal before the planning board that eliminates the income standard while maintaining the association between residential construction and intended land use. Under Proposal B, agricultural zone residents with lots greater than twenty thousand square feet, which is the minimum size allowed to install a septic system, may apply to build a residence based on a viable agricultural, recreational, or open source, open space plan. Proposal B achieves the goal identified by numerous city studies and administrations of only replacing the income standard when a viable alternative is identified. And we want to thank the city staff for putting forward Proposal B. We think they did a great job, and we thank them for all their hard work on this. So we wholeheartedly endorse Proposal B. Thank you for your time.
Is there anybody else in the public that would like to speak? None being, I'm bringing this back to the council. Counsel, any comments or debate? Counselor Staples?
Yeah, I just want to thank the citizens groups for working on this, and hats off to Eric and his staff. I mean, you guys did a great job putting this proposal together. I've been watching this issue for a lot of years, and I'm just surprised that we've come to a place where people are more or less in the right, in the right frame set, and more or less happy with this proposal. I don't think it's, I don't think anybody would say it's absolutely perfect, but I think we've got something here we can live with, and I really appreciate the work that's been done here. Thank you.
I'm going to forgive him some thanks, you know, and the modesty factor on your end is great, but remember, all this started with the council, you know, taking a principled stand, saying that the income standard is fundamentally wrong and not fair. From that stand, you worked with joint workshops with the planning board, you helped craft this language, you know, so hats off to the city council. This is probably the most monumental rezoning or modernization of zoning that's happened in the state of Maine, and, well, probably since this was actually enacted in, what, nineteen sixty-four. It's almost sixty years' worth of wrongs now being righted. I'm glad that it all came together, you all did a great job on this, and it's been, I'll let Counselor Walker talk about how long it's been, it's been about a decade. So, good job on that. Is there anybody that would like to speak against this? Is there anything else we'd like to be discussed before I call a vote? This is a second, this is a second vote, final reading. Sue?
Counselor Moran?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Staples?
Yes.
Counselor Gary?
Yes.
Counselor Hawes?
Yes.
And Counselor Milks?
Yes.
Ordinance passes, six zero. Next is order ninety-three dash zero seven one zero two zero two three. Authorizing the city manager to execute the collective bargaining agreement with the MSEA, SEIU nineteen eighty-nine. Do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Walker, second from Counselor Staples. Anybody in the public like to speak on this? None being, I'll bring it back. All those in favor? Passes six zero. Next is order nine four dash zero seven one zero two zero two three. It's authorizing the city manager to execute the sale of city-owned property, one oh three Newberry Street. Do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Counselor Walker, we got a second from Counselor Moran, open this up to the public. Anybody in the public would like to comment on the sale of one oh three Newberry Street?
Thank you, I have the correct item, a book sale of property. Again, my name is John Cleveland, one eighty-three Davis Avenue, Auburn, Maine. And again, I wanted to support the idea of selling property that has no particular value right now, and putting it into the private hands, I think that's a good direction to go. I just wanted to share with you my previous experience, though, that we've done that in the past as well, when I had the privilege of serving here as well, and we had similar proposals. Unfortunately, some of the folks came with good intentions, and the property got sold to them, but never developed as they said they would, unexpected circumstances, or whatever may have happened. I'd just like to urge you not to get in the same situation that we did. Some of those properties have been undeveloped for forty years, and never, never been developed. So perhaps as a way that you could put conditions on the sale, I would encourage executing the purchase and sale agreement, but with reasonable conditions, since the people offering to buy it are saying they're going to develop it and present a benefit to the community, that in some reasonable amount of time, they achieve what they say they're going to do, and that the city reserves some option to hold on to the property until they meet the meet the development that they said they're going to do, or something similar to that. So, because once it's, once you sign the purchase and sale, it's gone. If they, for whatever reasons unintended at times, you've lost the property and never gets developed the way you're hoping that it will be. So I hope you can find a way of protecting public interest that way.
Is there anybody else in the public that would like to speak? None being, I'll bring it back to the council for debate, and just to a point, we do have, in the vast majority of city-owned properties, language within the contracts outlining what's going to happen in a specific timeline. So we definitely learn from the mistakes of the past. Any comments?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a great idea to put some limitations on the sale, and we have given, with this order, we would give the city manager the ability to do that. I noticed in these orders, at least for this one and the next couple, the sealed bid, the language of the order says that we're going to sell this to Olin Opelneck. Is his name not Oleg?
Oleg. Oleg.
So I would like to make a motion to change the order, to say that we're going to sell this to Oleg.
I've got a motion on the floor to change typographically from Olin to Oleg. I hope Olin doesn't get mad. Second?
Second.
Okay, second. All those in favor of the motion amended. The motion is now amended. Anything else, Counselor Staples? No? Good, okay. Counselor Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You had brought up that there are parameters in here to safeguard, that there is a timeframe in order for him to develop the properties, and if he doesn't, what is the penalty?
Hi, so I'm Jay Brunchick, Director of Economic Development, for those who don't know me. I've been put in charge of selling these city-owned properties, and it was something I kind of volunteered to do a couple of years ago, based on the very reason that our citizen brought up and some of the other people have concerns with. So all of these will have a purchase and sales agreement that has a development timeline and what they plan on doing there, and our ability to receive the property back if they don't. But what we're doing with these smaller lots is, we are giving quite a buffer of time. We're at a point where construction companies are backed up, people aren't able to even build for like a year or so. What you'll see, what the performance agreement, I mean, the purchase and sales agreement will have like a two-year to show that they're, they've started and that they've got to complete within like four years, just because of how slow construction is.
Any other questions for Jay while he's up?
With that said, will we be holding the deed until he follows through and then release it once he's completed his project?
No, we'll be selling the property to them, but we'll have the ability to claw it back. We'd like to get it back on the tax rolls anyways, you know, so that at least taxes are being paid on it sooner than later, and we still have that ability to get the property back. It's, holding the deed doesn't make it necessarily safer for us, or give us much more power than what the purchase and sales agreement would have.
Mr. Mayor, I would just add, legal counsel is working through the sale agreement, so those, that language that you're looking for and that's being mentioned, as Jay outlined, is in there. There are certain parameters on what you can do, and so legal is giving guidance on that, and so, so we'll execute those sales based on that information.
If there's no other comments or debate, I'd like to ask for a vote on this order. All those in favor on the order as amended? Passes six zero. Next is order ninety-five dash zero seven one zero two zero two three. Authorizing the city manager to execute the sale of city-owned property, one fifteen Newberry Street. Do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Counselor Walker, second?
Second.
Counselor Staples? Open this up to the public. Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment on this? None being, I'll bring this back. Counsel, debate, questions? Yes?
I'd like to make a motion to change the text of the order, to change the name Olin to Oleg.
I'm pretty sure this is Olin. I got a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, okay, all those in favor? Passes. Motion's now amended, okay. Any other typos, comments, or debates? None being, bring it back to the council for a vote. All those in favor? Passes six zero. Next, order nine, excuse me, nine six dash zero seven one zero two zero two three. It's authorizing the city manager to execute the sale of city-owned property, three five one Main Street. Do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Counselor Walker, second by Counselor Staples. Anybody in the public like to comment? None being? Okay, we're going to bring it back to the council. Counsel, comment, questions?
Like to make a motion to change the text of the order, to change the name Olin to
Counselor Gary, all those in favor? Approves six zero. Oleg will be happy. Any other questions, comments, typos? Going to bring it back to a vote. All those in favor? Passes six zero. And if some of you might be wondering who this Oleg gentleman is, he owns substantial amounts of property abutting the area, he's also the redeveloper of this synagogue on Laurel, so he's, he's done a lot of wonderful things in the city. Next, order nine six dash zero seven one zero two zero two three. Authorizing the city manager to execute the sale of city property at...
Point of border?
Hold on, yes.
Order nine seven?
Yeah, nine seven, did I say, I'm sorry. I did not say nine seven? Oh, my fault. Oh, well, I said it because it's written right here. I'm like Anchorman. Next is order nine seven dash zero seven one zero two zero two three. Authorizing the city manager to execute the sale of city-owned property at three six nine Main Street. Do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Counselor Walker, second by Counselor?
Second.
Staples. I'll open this up to the public for comment. Any members of the public that would like to comment? None being, I'll bring it back to the council. Okay, ask for a vote? Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. From what I understand, if we authorize a city manager to put this to market and execute the sale of this property, that through this Bill Bergeren Fontaine family realty, that it don't come back to us, and that it's just all said and done, will this contract purchase and sale agreement have the... Sorry, safety measures as all the other previous properties we just authorized sale?
Any other questions?
The reason we're doing this through Bill and Fontaine Family Realty is when we did the RFP, we didn't get responses from individuals who we felt could really develop the property, once they learned more about the property, and so I think it needs to get on the MLS to get a wider market, but we can put the same criteria on with the purchase and sales agreement.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? I'm going to ask for a vote. All those in favor? Passes six zero. This time, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn. Nope, I'll take that back. Actually, hold on one second, there is one thing. I'd like to entertain a motion to suspend the rules, to add an item to tonight's agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion to move.
Second.
Walker, second from Counselor Milks. I'm going to ask for a show of hands, all those in favor, suspending the rules? All those opposed? Okay, rules suspended, five one. Next, I'd like to entertain a motion to authorize a cancellation of the July seventeenth regular city council meeting. This will become order nine eight dash zero seven one zero two zero two three. Do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Second from Counselor Moran. Open this up to the public for comment. Basically, we accomplished everything that we were going to do on the seventeenth today on the tenth during a special meeting, so we won't be taking a meeting on the seventeenth. We will have our next two in August, first and third Mondays. Anybody like to speak on this? None being, counsel? All those in favor? All those opposed? Passes, five one. Now, back. Ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to move.
Second.
Counselor Walker, second by Counselor Moran. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.